All right, so I think I need a motion to open the public meeting, right? Yeah, can I have a motion to open the public meeting at 7:16? Yeah.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I have a very brief President's Report for tonight. Let me just get that ready. A little bit too much stuff on my desk today. Hello, everyone. I hope everybody's summer is going well. I want to start by acknowledging our facility staff for all the hard work that's taken place over the summer to maintain and upgrade our buildings and prepare for the start of the year in a few weeks. It takes a ton of effort to keep our campuses looking beautiful. And I know some extra hours were put in and given the weather outside may continue to be put in to handle some of the things that have happened because of the recent storms. So thank you to all the facilities folks for all that work. Also want to acknowledge, given the agenda tonight, the work of our policy committee over this last month. So Hillary and Kaylee and Dr. Ackerman did a lot of work for a bunch of new policies that are going to get discussed this evening. Some of them are new, some of them are updates to existing ones, so thank you for doing that. And then finally, I also want to acknowledge Andrew Corsilli, who is not here tonight, and our building leaders, because there's been a whole bunch of talent search work that's gone on here over the summer. We've got an impressive set of individuals being recommended tonight to join the district team. We all know CCSD is a great place for people to work. A lot of people want to work here. That means it takes a lot of effort to go through the process of kind of thoroughly vetting everybody and make sure we get the best people. So thank you to those people as well. And that is my President's Update. Dr. Ackerman?
Thank you, Brian. Oh, calendar. You do the calendar.
Oh, sorry. My mistake, I forgot. We need to do the calendar adjustment. There is a 1.1.1 on the agenda where we need to have a motion to adopt a small revision that's being made to that calendar. So can I have a motion to make that adjustment? Can I have a second?
One second.
Any questions or concerns about this change?
I'm going to be talking about it in my superintendent report, but the small adjustment is that on Friday, March 28th, it'll be an early release day for our K4 students for we're adding a parent-teacher conference in the spring semester.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
It's not really about this revision, but I did want to ask if Christine could share the change in the graduation date for next year?
Yes. Unfortunately, fortunately, however you want to look at it, the New York State Athletic Association moved their championship for certain sports to the weekend that we typically have graduation. And so we couldn't risk that some of our students may not be able to participate in graduation. So we had to move it to the following weekend. So that's why that decision was made.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to, we've cited a hearing tonight. It's required under regulation that we have a hearing on our code of conduct and the district safety plan. So David, if you could pull up my slides, I'm just going to go over some of our changes, proposed changes in the code of conduct, which has been sent out to the community on July 31st. And then we don't have any changes to the safety plan. But I, so let me just begin by saying that there's two parts of the code of conduct. There is the narrative part, which describes everyone's roles and responsibility, and then some definitions. And then there's the attachment that articulates how we respond to certain infractions. So based on feedback we've received from the community this year, the policy committee is proposing that instead of the district providing quarterly reports on hate speech, discrimination, or bias incidents across the district by level, then instead that we do an update on the district equity team's work at two points during the year at the end of each semester. I do want to remind the board that we are required to report incidents of hate, speech, bias, and discrimination to the state ed department at the end of every year. So that data will continue to exist because it's important, because it's part of their requirements, as well as us keeping track of what's happening within our school buildings. So that data doesn't go away. I'm just not reporting it quarterly because of the feedback that we've received this year. So that's one proposed adjustment. The second is that based on some feedback, we are moving towards allowing for more discretion when the middle school principals encounter an incident of discrimination, hate speech, and bias for our fifth graders. So we've removed them from the middle school, the secondary model. And we also created a new category because we were having a hard time when students were, one student maybe slapped or punched and pinched, and the other student didn't respond. We were blundering everything under fighting and it wasn't really accurate. So we're trying to be a little bit more accurate in our reporting here. And so because of that, you can see that we have made some adjustments to how we're responding to the discrimination, hate, speech, and bias incidents. So you'll see the first blue is we removed fifth grade. And so now that's just the marker for sixth grade students. And then the high schools recommended, instead of a two-day out-of-school suspension for the first offense, that there's one day out of school and one day in school so they can engage that student in some work around empathy and student belonging and acceptance. And so those are the two suggestions from the administrative team. Also, you'll notice if you're looking at the code of conduct that there was another pocket at the top where discrimination was not connected to this. It had a different, it was outside of this pocket of the policy. So I'm proposing we remove that so there's no confusion in our families about how that we respond to these particular incidents. And then we received a lot of feedback from our families, just wanting some clarity about how we respond when students say things that we're really concerned about and the language that they use that may be perceived as threatening. And so we decided to come up with a response so that everyone kind of understands the way that we move forward when incidents like this happen. Because you can't really articulate to a parent whose child might have been the victim of some language that they're really concerned about, how you're handling that particular situation because that student has some privacy rights. But we, so we felt like a way of communicating to people how we go about addressing these particular matters was important for us to share in our code of conduct. So you'll see that we have a similar pattern of response in all three levels, with the exception of the involvement of the school resource officer. And you'll see at the elementary level, there's a lot of discretion there as to whether or not the school resource officer will be involved. And then as students progress in middle school and high school, there's less discretion because kids have a better understanding of what they're saying. And then I want you to know that before I brought this forward to the policy committee, I ran this by our medical director, Chief Carroll, and our school district attorney, just to make sure we were all on the same page that this is the most appropriate way for us to handle students that are, that we have potential concerns about being assessed for violent language that they use in our school buildings. Now, I also felt it was important because sometimes, and many families don't realize this, parents contact us over the weekend when kids aren't under our supervision about concerns that they have. And when that happens, we call the Newcastle Police and they address it. And then we, we work with families when students return to school because we don't have the ability to address those situations when kids aren't in our building. So I think it's important that our families understand that that's going to happen if something's brought to our attention. We're not going to be investigating it on a Saturday or a Sunday. We just don't have the ability to do that because we, we don't, we don't have the, we're not going to, we can't be going into people's homes and talking to them. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear, too. So those are the major adjustments to the code of conduct that are proposed. We haven't received any feedback from residents who live within the district at this point, but we will take feedback from our community if they would like to send that to us. We are asking for it before our next policy meeting, which is April 22nd, August 22nd, so that we can, we can look at it collectively and determine if we're going to make any adjustments before we propose the final code of conduct to the board for adoption. It does have to be adopted on the 26th. Sometimes we do get feedback from people who don't live here on our code of conduct, and that's fine. We welcome that, too. And we'll look at that as well. But again, this is a code of conduct for the students who go to school here and the families who have students who are enrolled in here. And these are the guidelines by which we're going to be operating here within our community. So while we appreciate all the feedback that we receive, it's really important that we hear from our families, whose students are in our school district, about their suggestions or feedback around this particular policy. And the other thing I just wanted to share really quickly because it's just important. Our safety plan is prescribed. It's, it has a lot of language in it that's regulatory. It's got five sections that are required. And the only thing that really changes on it are names of people who are on it. And so, you know, we have a pattern, a shell pattern that we all follow in the state. So there's not a lot of, there's really no changes within this except for some grammatical changes. And I know that the region's just passed some requirements of when we need to let parents know that we have lockdown drills and not to simulate real-life situations. We do all that anyway. That's like good practice. I don't know what's been going on around other, the state and other places, but we'll be aligned with what their requirements are because that's the way that we typically operate. I think what we're going to need to do for those, for some of our principals who maybe wouldn't give a weak runway, we'll just make sure we do that moving forward because that's what the new language says. And so that ends the, so that ends the presentation part of the, of the code of conduct and the safety plan for the hearing. So at this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment on the safety plan or the code of conduct. Okay, so then that closes the public comment part of the hearing. So is there any feedback that the board wanted to provide that Kaylee, Hillary, and I, for us to discuss on the 22nd, or you can send us your thoughts? So now's the time.
Christine, can you just share with everyone what the reasoning? Because I know many families are away still or like going in and out or about to take their family vacations and why this needs to be, like we need to have the feedback by a certain date and then why it has to be adopted by the 26th?
Yes, so under regulation, you have to provide 30 days for the public to make comment on their, on the code of conduct, and it needs to be adopted before the school year begins. So it's really those two, two big pieces of information. The safety plan and the code of conduct are really the two guiding documents that there's some real tight requirements around. One of them I have to upload into the system and certify that it's all been done. So I know it's not ideal, but also the code of conduct, although it's a, it doesn't change throughout the year. We take feedback throughout the year to make adjustments. And so that's been going on since last September. So you'll see in here, a lot of the adjustments that we've made hasn't been based on feedback we've received over the summer. It's been feedback that we, myself, and the board, and the principals have received all year long, and it's reflected in, it's reflected in the code. So that's a different way of kind of looking at it, too, because you can't, you can't really make changes during the year because of the noticing requirements that are, that exist with it.
And then I guess one other thing that you might want to talk about is when we made changes and we added the fifth, instead of students grade K to five for discrimination, hate, speech, bias incident, like why not include up to six? What was the reasoning behind why we stopped that fifth instead of six?
So the principals had felt that in the middle school that there is a difference between understanding in fifth grade compared with sixth grade. And so some of the incidents that they were addressing in fifth grade, there were some real nuance around, really if kids had a, had a deep understanding of what they were actually communicating to their peers around some of the speech that we're using, they didn't find that with sixth grade. They found like in sixth grade, you've been here for a year, you've been a part of our community, you have an understanding of what we're about here. But they didn't feel like that same level of understanding was there for our fifth-grade students because they were new to the district, new to the, new to the building.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sort of, I guess, not necessarily pigging back off that. I understand, like, obviously, there needs to be a policy in place, but we could all agree that there's different levels of egregiousness. So offense one for student A is particularly egregious. Can we escalate up?
Yes, so that's a great question. So like, let's go right to this, let me go back here to the code of conduct. This chart in particular, just because it is, like, in a high, a high school student may do something that's egregious, and it might be their first offense, that might be their first incident of hate speech, but they may be suspended five days and out for a hearing, depending on what they've done. This is the minimum because what we-
That first sentence is really the key up on the top.
Yeah, because what we felt like-
So it allows for discretion?
Oh, yeah. No, there's a lot of discretion here. And normally in that situation, parents are, I've never had a parent say, wait, this is the minimum. It's usually when students are getting the minimum and parents feel like it's too much. But we have these minimums because what we heard, and this is before many of you are on the board, is that we weren't responding consistently, and we weren't responding with the seriousness at which many members of our community felt like we needed to. So at least everyone knows what the baseline is here.
And Christine, can you just let our families know the distinction between in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension?
Well, in-school suspension's in the building, and it's, kids are given their work and they're able to do their work in a space. Usually it's in a, in the main office and it's supervised by someone, depending on what building you're in. And then out-of-school suspension, students are home. Right, so they typically, they could have, they could, the parent could choose for there to be, them to receive tutoring for that, but it's, it doesn't necessarily need to take place on that day. And so we try not to send students out of school, but sometimes the behavior is so significant that they can't be in school the next day. But we don't have many incidents where students are violating our code of conduct. So that, that is, that is very true about this district, which is great. But we do have times where students make mistakes. So we, the last thing we want to do is for them to be home because we know that that is a burden on, on the families, and it's also not ideal for our kids, right? So we try to keep them here the best we can and have them do their work here. And they're with us, and they're meeting with their counselor, and they're getting support. So that's always our goal, but sometimes we just can't do it based on what's happening. Okay, all right, great. All right, so now let me just provide a couple of community updates. Okay. All right, so we are, tonight on the agenda, coupled with the calendar approval, is an SMOA with the teachers' union to add conferences as a pilot in the spring for elementary families. And this really responds to our strategic plan and feedback that we've received from our families that they, particularly at the elementary level, is around having a better understanding of how their kids are progressing. And so trying to figure out how to do this at this point through this SMOA is advantageous for us because we are going into negotiations and the contract does have language in and around conferences, which is why we have to do this through like a side agreement with the CCT. So this is what we've agreed upon for our first attempt at trying to make this happen for, for our families. So first of all, on the 28th will be a half day, and then the 31st is already a superintendent conference day. So those will be the days that the parent-teacher conferences will happen. They're going to be condensed, so they should not need to be as long as they were in November. And they're going to be optional for parents. They don't have to go to the conference if they don't have any concerns. They don't need to come in to meet the teacher. That usually happens in November. And the teachers would like to provide for our families a Zoom-in option. They don't normally do that, but they want to do that for these conferences so that it's convenient for families. Plus, I know that 31st is a holiday for some of our parents as well, so we have to make sure that we're accommodating that. And so based on, based on this adjustment, November will be the conferences. January, parents will receive a report card, which we've updated to be more aligned with our stat standards. So parents will see a new version of our report card. We'll talk about that when parents come in and return back to school. March will be the parent-teacher conferences, and then June will be a report card. So we'll see how this model works, and then we'll make decisions about next year's calendar after we get through this spring pilot program. So I feel pretty good about it. I'm glad the CCT felt like this made sense for our families. We've been talking about this since I've been here. And, and so I'm happy to present that SMOA for your consideration. It actually came out of a conversation that Hillary, Kaylee, Andrew, Brian, Mike, and I were having together. So I'm happy we were able to get to the point where we're able to present that tonight for your consideration.
I just want to say how excited I am about this, especially when it came out of that meeting that we were having. And also because I think any opportunity that parents have, I know it's being offered as an optional conference, but any opportunity, like a formal opportunity that the district provides where parents and teachers and administrators can meet to talk about their students, I think is a win for us. And so I really appreciate that. My only thing is I wish we would have it for the other levels as well. Well, I just, but who knows, maybe, maybe we can do that in the future. But I'm really excited about it because I do think it's hard in November, you know, September, October, and then November, we're off a lot and a lot of half-days and whatnot. And it's hard to kind of, unless you know the child from previous years, it is, it is hard. And then not to have any other communication. Of course, you can always reach out, you know, until, I mean, really, that's it. You only have that one formal meeting, and then it's over. And then so I really am excited about this and really appreciate that. And hopefully it works well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kaylee. All right, so now I want to talk about our heat alleviation plan. So I'm presenting two adjustments to the plan based on what happened at the end of the school year. And this is only until we're done with our AC expansion. So what happened the last full day of school is that the heat index went over 96 because we monitor it all day long because once it hits 96, kids have to come inside. It went over really early before 11 o'clock, and then as the, and it didn't go back down. And so what happened was we had multiple classrooms at the elementary level go over 85. Our gyms went over 85. I think some of them hit 90. And so we had a lot of kids in the cooling spaces, and we just, it's fine, we supervised everybody, but the learning wasn't happening the way that parents would expect us to be able to support their kids because we just didn't have enough cooling spaces. And I'm saying that was really evident at the elementary level, not so much at the middle school level. But I do believe that if the high school was open, and remember, we had exams, we'd have a similar problem here that we did at the elementary level. And so what I'm suggesting, and I would like everyone to think about, is that if the heat index is going to reach 96 degrees or higher by 11 o'clock, that I call a, and it's going to stay there, like there's no thunder, there's no rain coming, that I, that I call an early dismissal for students only. Because at that point, all the activities need to be canceled. And we wouldn't, we just wouldn't be able to accommodate the kids in the way that we would want to optimally. But in that situation, our staff will remain on site and will be able to work because they can be in the air-conditioned spaces because there's not as many of them. And so if I feel like we're going in that direction, I'll let parents know the night before that I might have to call one, and then I'll make the call by nine. But I wouldn't make the call the night before because I have to, I have, things change. And so that, I know this would be a burden on families.
And Christine, you're not calling it on a per-building basis.
No, it'd be everybody. Everybody would be off. And, and so that would be the first part. The second part is, and this we actually have to change because I didn't realize this, but we have an 85-degree indicator for our rooms. But really, the gyms need to, like, if, we need to be able to hold our indoor sports. So even if our gyms were to hit 85, we can't cancel our games because we can only cancel our games if they hit 96. So I have to make an adjustment to the language to reflect the NISBA heat guidance for our after-school activities so that we're not canceling sectional volleyball games when we should be playing because we haven't hit the threshold. So I need to work on that as a part of the plan. But the big part of this, the big decision is this right here. And so I know that other school districts, some school districts, they early dismissed. Other school districts like us stayed open and sweat it out. And other school districts have air conditioning fully, so they don't have a problem. But we do have a problem. So I want to hear everyone's thoughts on this, and I think we should come back to it at the next meeting.
So we'll welcome comments from the community around this topic. And I'm pleased to see, Christine, that you're interested in expanding your meteorological services that you're offering in addition to the snow calls that you make. But yeah, comments or questions?
Well, so you are maintaining discretion if you foresee the index potentially dropping. It's not an immediate 96 in between that window and we're going home.
Right, because like, let's say it's predicted to be 96 degrees at 11, but then at 12, it's going to be 70 because it pours. I wouldn't, it would, it would only be if there's no indication of any kind of relief.
I also think it would be helpful and instructive because not everybody is aware just to touch on what the AC expansion is going to look like.
So in the elementary, middle schools, and right now, we're doing work to prepare for the incorporation of air conditioning in the cafeteria and in the gyms. And, but it will not be ready until the spring semester that's anticipated. Once that happens, we don't need to do this. That, we have enough big spaces to handle everything. In the, in Bell and in Seven Bridges, it's the cafeterias and the gyms, and they'll be fine. And then here, it's all of L Building, the cafeteria, and the gyms.
So theoretically, this is for the first few weeks of school this year, assuming that the project is completed. Well, well, right now, the date is, is the spring.
Right now, I'm, my, I would be, well, we only have, the elementary projects are underway. The middle school and high school projects are not because they haven't been approved yet by the state. So I know how upset people get when I dismiss early. So I'm not saying this casually at all. I was like, we got to stay open.
We'll also get upset when it's 100 degrees in the classrooms, too.
Yeah, so like, I, I understand like that. So I don't, I don't want people to feel like I'm, I'm just saying, well, we, like, I've, I've thought a lot about this. I was in all the buildings. I saw what was happening. And we managed it. We absolutely managed it, but it really wasn't. I do think there were certain times that-
Well, if the kids aren't learning, what's the point?
It's not ideal.
Everyone was doing their best.
You know, we cancel school when it's snowing because it's not safe for the buses to be on the road.
Right.
We cancel, like, the weather is changing around here, right? Like, I don't remember too many elementary school days in the eighties when we thought we were going to melt to death. Like, that last Friday, I, I think the middle school students might disagree that it was better at the middle schools. I think it was, that Friday was probably the worst day I can remember in terms of what was going on in this building. But I think that the way you set it up was tying it to this metric of the heat index, which is linked to what we're supposed to be doing already for the sport, makes a lot of sense because it gives us a good data point that's not, it's a feels-like. It's the real feel of being in the buildings, experiencing that heat. So I think that makes a lot of sense. But I think that we need to have this in place because it's, it's not safe or healthy for our kids to be in an environment that's that.
That has never happened before. It's never gotten that hot since I've been here in the, in the rooms when the kids were here.
And now that we have a plan, maybe you won't.
With the AC expansion, when it's completed and we have more spaces for everyone to go, you don't foresee having to do this again?
No, we wouldn't. I wouldn't do this.
Because you can still support the learning even when they all, the cafeteria and the gym?
Yes, you can have all the kindergartners in your cafeteria, and you could still do work with them in there. You, you can have a whole pocket in the gym. You can have a pocket in the Global Learning Center. Like, we can do it. We just couldn't do it on that Friday.
Right.
But I also, I feel like I have to let people know in advance.
No, I think it's a smart plan. I think that we don't want to be letting out all the time. And because I know working parents, it's really hard for them. But when days are that extreme, it's the right thing to do.
All right, we'll see what, I think we should see what comes in.
Let's see. Yeah, Amy, you should feel free to write to us about what you think about this.
But I think for sure you need to layer in the call the night before to allow people to know that it might be on the-
I can even just, I can-
Sure, whatever.
Yeah. Okay, so I did want to, I know we have two new policies, but we do have two policies we're doing updates on. So I just want to present those in the superintendent's report, so. Uh, we had some advocacy from the students in the spring on the track team to make some adjustments to the transportation policy. So we ran a pilot with um. The tennis and the track team in the spring. And so now, and that worked, so now we have some proposed adjustments to this particular policy. For our kids who are traveling to district sponsored activities or events. And really, this is focused on. Our high school student athletes at the varsity level because everyone else doesn't. They don't, not in a situation where this would really apply. And so let me just, um. There's there's coming to the event and then there's going home from the event, and there's a lot of restrictions in place about how kids can travel to an event. That's given to us by New York State Educational Law. And kids can only travel to an event if their parent brings them there. You can't have your aunt, your uncle, your babysitter, your friend bring you to an event. Um, and I even wrote the law in there so people could look it up because I know how I know how people like accurate information here. And so. What the track students were saying is that they wanted their parents to bring them to a. The event because they the bus was leaving at like nine A M. And they weren't partic- they weren't running until like four P M. And it it what so ha- it so happened that this happened to be on a Friday that was a school day. But we didn't have enough flexibility in this policy to allow that to happen. Now, there has been. Flexibility in the policy where if there was an extenuating circumstance, like you had the S A T, you had a doctor's appointment. Something like that was happening. That the athletic director could permit that, but we didn't have anything that would allow for the situation I just explained. And so um. This policy has been revised to allow for that. And we've done that through this language that says. It's in the box, second paragraph. When there is a sick significant discrepancy in start times between individual student athletes approximately three hours in length on a weekend or weekday event starting before eleven A M. Or a unique conflict like a college board assessment. Administrator may consider written requests from parents or legal guardians to drive students to contests themselves. And these requests must be at least uh made in writing at least forty eight hours in advance. And what this also does. Is talks about how. The statutory language prohibits alternative drivers who are not the parents or legal guardians given of a student. From driving. Students to events when the district is providing transportation. Now, what's not up here. Is the policy also, and this is not a new part of the policy, allows for third parties to bring. Students home from events because the board you all approved that last year. Because you felt like we needed to have flexibility in that policy for parents, particularly like when kids were at a. Basketball game across the bridge and they couldn't make it and then kids wanted to get home. And so that's all set up and that's been working really well for us. But we didn't have, um, we needed, we felt like we needed to have a. Uh, like a a different process for kids to be able to get to events. So this solves that all. So are there any questions on this? So if there's any feedback anyone wants to give us before we present this at the next meeting, that would be great.
Sometimes we. Pass a policy and they get me sent and then somebody's brought to our attention where there's something that doesn't work or doesn't make sense and. For people continue to do that because we do evolve and we will look at them and make modifications and. This was a situation that we hadn't anticipated, but we stronger and then we drafted, I think.
I will say in no circumstances are kids allowed to drive themselves. Or drive their friends home from anything. That that's not, that's never gonna be allowed here. Just, I just need to clarify. Okay, um. All right, so now. Facilities you, so every year you approve the fees. And so the fees that we're suggesting. Are increased three point nine percent, which aligns with the C P I in May. So you, when you increase fees, you have to have like a like a a method to do it. You can't just say we're gonna increase everything by five bucks. So the policy committee met with Josh. And with David, David and we felt like this was. Probably um the most appropriate way to increase our fees and it's very, it's a real nominal increase. You can look at the differences between this year and last year. Um, and it aligns with an increase in our expenses. I think the big part of. The uh facilities. Process. And what we're um asking the board to consider, and this is again a first reading of a policy that already exists, is if you look at the bottom, we've added language. And we've added this language based on feedback we received from families that were um upset with some of the registration pro- process, process. Uh, the registration process that were for outside organizations using our facilities. And so what we did was we added two bullets. The first was that. All organizations using our facilities. C C S D facilities must ensure equitable registration access for all school district residents. And so that's the first bullet because we have a whole bunch of things that happen here that aren't just kid related. So we felt like if you're gonna use our facilities. That anyone in our community should have the right at the same time to register for that particular um. Event or activity. If there isn't a period, right? Because everyone's paying for our facilities who lives here. And then we added another bullet. That addresses the school year specifically. And it says all organizations using our facilities from September one to June thirtieth must allow equal registration access for all registered students who attend. Our schools because we do have kids that attend our schools who aren't residents here. But we didn't want to have anyone have a two tiered system of who can have access to activities that happen in here. So this would be for everyone. It would be for. Outside organizations, the P T A, sports boosters, like we felt like if for all of our kids, we wanted it to be equal. And then we felt like for any other activities that involve our residents, like the summer programs, all all of that needed to be equal, but our students who go here who aren't residents. Shouldn't have equal access to summer programs that happened here because they're not, they're not here during this. We we just felt like that was. Not an, that was an overreach. And so, um. Anyone have any feedback you want to give Hillary and Kaylee? Or me on this? Yes. Right.
Yes. They have to do the C C S D school district because they have a residence for residents.
To be clear, if they, even if they live in that.
Right, yes. Yeah, you can't. Yeah, you can't, there can't be a two tier registration system for our. Residents, but then we also added that second bullet because during the school year, there can't be a two tier registration student registration system. For residents and then all the students who go here who aren't residents. That's not, we don't want that. We don't want that either.
I think though, I know this was in response to what happened in the town with the wreck. And like the summer camp and all of that, but I do think, and I could be wrong, and I'm sure somebody will call me if I am. I do believe the town recently passed. Um, a resolution to consider all C C S D registered families. As C C S D. As Newcastle residents. Only for. This, yes, for that, the town registration. Um, and so I think that actual, that resolves. So it's sort of like a double. You know.
I don't know if that happened or not.
I I think that's what happened is what I heard, but I did not verify, so um I don't usually like to say things without. Knowing a hundred percent, but.
It's when we're using our fields, we're taking care of our.
Right, but I think the town also wanted to do the same and had just recently passed a resolution, something of that sort.
Uh, I that would, that would be great if they did that.
Yeah.
I I I I think it's good for us too to have this in our policy, so. Because what happened the last time is I had all these parents contacting me and I was like, I, you know, I I wanna, if we're anchored into something, then it would be helpful for there to be clarity around what we. Expect if people are using our spaces, so.
So I do think, I think it's just, it's nice. I think whenever possible, if we, I mean, not whenever, we should always strive to try to work with. Not only the community members that are upset, but really just thinking about the whole community and working with, you know, town board and. You know, all the people that are in our community, you know, and sometimes things will not feel fair, but I think. You know, this is. A step towards showing people that we we are listening and we we do care. And so I I appreciate it.
Okay, so so that'll be on the next. Agenda for your consideration for adoption. If if we don't get any feedback, that would warrant a change to that. And then the the last thing I just wanted to uh share with you is that, you know, they're looking at changing the foundation aid formula, so we have submitted a letter on the district's behalf. The the concern that we we have and that what almost happened. This past spring is that they changed the formula and we took a big cut to what we were expecting without enough notice. And so, um. Josh and I have had crafted something. With David's help to try to um. Give the the Rockefeller Foundation that is studying this, just some language around what we'd want them to think about. And then some recommendations around what what would be helpful for us and then just a minimum, like if you're going to cut our age, you gotta. Please allow us to have it be excludable in the tax levy limit so that we. Um, would be able to account for that. It we and we would only need that in the first year. Um, we could account for that deficit as we're as we're planning forward and we don't, people don't wind up in the same situation that resulted in that huge. Response because they were suggesting an adjustment without giving us enough notice. So I just, this is on our website, um. Uh, Josh and I've also sent it to some of our partner. People that we work with on our on our particular issue, so I did want to just share that with everybody. And then the final thing is on the agenda tonight, we made some S R O adjustments. Edison, um, who was our S R O at the middle school has been promoted to sergeant with it, which is great. And so uh Tom, who is at the uh elementary schools, is being recommended to move up to the middle schools. And then we're gonna welcome Josh Howard to the elementary schools. As the new school resource officer, starting in September, and part of our contract has the board acknowledging. Um, uh, Josh as the new S R O in the district and I know um our. Our administrators and I know some of our board members have had the opportunity to um meet with Josh. Before this recommendation tonight, so we're excited to have him on on our staff. And then I just wanted to highlight, we're getting ready, new family orientation. Here it comes. Um, spread sports registrations are open right now for um. High school students and. Uh, locker cleaner, all the dates are starting to roll and the next time that we should, we'll be meeting together will be after we've uh opened uh for our faculty and superintendent conference day on the twenty ninth. So um. That's the end of the superintendent's update.
Christine, do you have any updates about the pre K?
Lottery?
Yeah, and any, any just.
Yeah, I Adam, Adam, do you want to provide an update?
Any news on that?
Sure, yes, so we're moving along. We've got the Grafflin Annex, um, very close to ready. We've got a lot of equipment supplies have come in, we're. Um, had the director from Healthy Kids come in and and, you know, set, start to set it up, uh, which is great. They're working through the hiring process. We've been able, although these are. Um, their employees, they've extended the opportunity for us to interview them as well, so. Um, Jamie and Josh and myself have been interviewing some of their finalists as they go through that process, so that's moving along well. Um, we conducted a lottery last week on Wednesday, um, and now we've got some R S V Ps from families. Um, a little bit of a spoiler spoiler alert for those that are watching, we have, I think, four families that were invited that have declined, so we'll be able to access the waitlist. I think the number is four. Mister Schonbart, tell me if it's not four so far. I think we have four that have declined. We're gonna confirm to make sure that they didn't select that by accident. Um, because we have limited spaces, but we do have a wait, a waitlist, so I don't want to like announce the wrong number, but uh it looks like we're gonna have several families from the waitlist that'll have the option, but. Um, we did the lottery all the way down the entire waitlist, so we'll be able to fill in people and make sure we take advantage of all those spots, so it's exciting for us and we're still. Uh, we have um thirty six spots altogether, two sections of eighteen. We have those two classrooms in the annex.
And how many people applied or like or put in their name?
Yeah, we had over a hundred, less than a hundred and fifty. I think the number was around a hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Total, so yeah, the far out, like our our demand far exceeded our ability to supply, you know, seats, but that's what we got in terms of the grant and so. You know, and that's what we have in terms of space, so I think it's a good, good maiden voyage for us.
Thank you.
All right, uh, now it's time for committee reports. Uh. I know we have a policy committee, but we're gonna get into, we already heard some and we're gonna hear some more. Was there any other committees that met?
Do you want to just update everyone the letters going?
Oh, yeah, so um we should let the community know that this is a year where we invite uh parent participation on committees. Uh, it's usually a two year appointment and uh it is an even year and that's a year when we send out those invitations, so. I believe we're gonna try to get those out before the end of the week, so.
Not Monday?
Yeah, or Monday, yeah. So uh, community members, if you're interested in participating in a board committee, just be on the lookout for that invitation coming very soon. That brings us to public comment. We welcome public comment. In respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. Board members may be contacted by email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves about comments. Okay, it thus ends the public comment period for tonight, uh, which puts us to item three approvals and ratifications. Uh, the first item is to approve the minutes of the July eighth board meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Any questions or adjustments to those minutes? Okay, so all in favor of accepting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next up, we have uh. Five policies. I believe they're all first readings, so we're not going to approve them tonight. We're just uh acknowledging that this is the first reading of them. Do we need to have? Do we do them one by one, Lisa? Is that? I mean, we've already talked about some of them, so we should talk about the ones that we haven't talked about, so. Let me just get that straight.
Three point five.
Right, so we've already discussed.
Three point six.
Three, two, three, three, and three, four, uh, in the superintendent's report. Lisa, do you want motions to do those? No? Okay, great. So then let's get into three, five, and three, six. I don't know if. Hillary or Kelly wants to talk about those or Christine, if you do.
Yeah, I I think what we should do, if it's okay with Hillary and Kelly, is I should, these are the first reading of new policies, I should read them.
Yes.
Okay.
As long as you don't make me read it.
I'm gonna, so for the A I part, um, the first part of this is points from the U S Department of Education, so I'm gonna skip that part because that's um. Just defining what A I is. And so the second part is really um. How A I is gonna work in Chaposa Central School District. So um Chaposa Central School District stands on A I technology. Responsible and ethical integration of generative artificial intelligence, A I into Chaposa Central School District's educational environment is necessary consideration. As technology continues to evolve, by harnessing A I, we believe we will enhance learning, teaching, and administrative processes while upholding our values and academic excellence and integrity. This policy supports our commitment to evolving educational practices, ensuring students are prepared to thrive in a dynamic, technology-driven world. Ms. Doc? All right, um, students' responsibilities and expectations. Let me read this section and then I'll stop again, okay? Students shall have access to age-appropriate A I tools that support their learning and creativity, creativity while ensuring the privacy and security of their data and A I-generated content. They are entitled to transparent information about how A I tools. Are used and should receive support in using these tools effectively and ethically. In turn, students should have the responsibility to use A I tools ethically for educational purposes, credit A I assistance in their work where applicable, protect the privacy of their own and others' data. And report any misuse of A I tools. You'll see the yellow is some work that we did in the policy committee because we're working online, which so I kept that in there just so you could see it. Students are responsible for generating their own. Content following the guidance and expectations of the faculty. Students may use A I tools to complete their, complement their learning and enhance creativity as permitted by their teacher. While maintaining academic creativity by not representing A I-generated content as their own. Work and describing how they use A I and completing their work. They should follow established guidelines of their teacher. Presiding A I sources such as A P A format, respect privacy and intellectual property while utilizing A I tools. By doing so, they can effectively leverage A I to support their learning in an ethical and responsible manner. Ms. Doc, any questions on that section, comments?
So this is ostensibly, so Chat G P T is not writing um what our kids are producing. Um, how? How are we monitoring that?
Adam, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, we talked about that a lot.
Yeah, so right now the tools that are designed to pick up generative A I text are very unreliable. There haven't been any tools that that can do that well, so. A big piece of this is like as best practices emerge, a big piece of this is knowing your students well, knowing their writing, being able to.
a big piece of this is like as best practices emerge, a big piece of this is knowing your students well, knowing their writing, being able to identify the, you know, the things that they're that they do well typically and the things that they're learning to do. Um, you know, for those of us that are using AI more and more, you start to be able to recognize how it writes. Right now, most generative AI tools vis a vis ChatGPT and others, lots of other like kind of different names, similar processes. Um, they do have a style with which they write that's very different than our students are writing. In some cases, our students are writing beyond what AI is writing. In other cases, they're not quite writing as well as AI is writing. So um, a lot of this is teachers knowing a student, knowing what they're working on, knowing what kind of is the next step of growth for them, being able to provide that feedback. Um, but it's it's imperfect at this point in terms of our ability to really identify, you know, finding plagiarized text is easier. There have been lots of tools like Turnitin that'll search the web and identify things that have already been published. And then you can, you know, search for those things and find it hold a student accountable for it. But generative AI tools are really tricky when it comes to that.
But it's also sort of like an implicit honor code. I mean, the teacher is is you know, telling their students, you know, that this is impermissible. I mean, A AI cannot be producing your work. And there's an acknowledgement back and forth that needs to be occurring within the classrooms.
Right, right.
Right, and that's, yeah, that's something we talked.
I've talked a lot about it. It uh in terms of expectations being clearly communicated in the policy and that part, but also that I think part of what's challenging with AI is students don't necessarily even realize they're using it and they don't know what it is. Like, there's so much.
Or in some cases, they don't even know it's wrong.
Right. No, no, of course. And so a lot of what we talked about in terms of how to practice policy, and this is also obviously just a first reading, so if there are places to make it better or stronger
Right.
was around teachers and students both clearly communicating and clearly understanding what was permitted, what was not permitted, and what you could represent as your own. You know, both in terms of teacher work and student work, and also in terms of expectations, in terms of what campus did in the same way that you would if you were doing your project, like how much that has to be your own work or how much that like that it needs to be. A lot of what we tried to do is around clear communication.
I think it sort of comes down to like when we when we were kids and you had to cite your sources and teachers taught you how to do that and mom was paraphrasing and mom was quoting and teaching you how to not plagiarize the old-fashioned way. This is like the new this new education of our kids, how to use, you know, these information sources on the web to help your learning and support it, but to always keep your own information on your intellectual property is your work and anyone else's is not.
And that someone else's fate.
Right.
Well, and I'll just say, I'm I'm glad to see that we're not shying away from these tools. Uh, we're not saying we're going to put them in a box and stay away from them. I think we have to embrace them, but to do it responsibly and to have it be a partnership between students and faculty seems very sensible for trying to figure out what to do. But I welcome community input on this. How will, if people want to check it out, how can they?
What, the policy?
Yeah.
Oh, it's on the um it's under, it's on the board meeting uh site underneath the agenda.
Right. So for for this meeting's agenda, if somebody wants to uh take their own crack at reading it and provide any suggestions, they can.
And all suggestions can be written by themselves.
Ah, yeah.
Right.
All right, so us, I keep going. Staff responsibilities and expectations. Staff shall have access to professional development and training on AI tools, access to AI tools that support instructional and administrative tasks, opportunities to collaborate on AI integration and support in addressing the challenges and ethical considerations of AI use. In turn, they are responsible for enhancing, not replacing, human interaction and instruction with AI. Ensuring ethical and transparent AI tool usage, protecting student data privacy and the security of AI-generated content, guiding students in the ethical use of AI and modeling appropriate AI usage. Teachers shall be responsible for communicating to students AI usage expectations for student-generated content consistent with this policy. Staff should use AI to enhance teaching, learning, and efficiency. I'll stop. Any comments? All right, now this is um AI applications and instructional requirements. This aligns with our uh data privacy stuff. So based on any information used to input in a AI, in generative AI may be used by that system and potentially be male available to other users of the system. District users must not input any sensitive copyrighted proprietary or confidential district information consistent with applicable state and federal laws and district policies, including but not limited to the following student information, anything that would be projected by FERPA or Educational Law two D. Staff information, anything that would be protected by Educational two D or other confidential personnel information. Faculty will only use generative AI tools with students that are Educational Law two D compliant and been approved by Chaposa Central School District. I'm going to stop. Adam, do you want to talk about the system that we're purchasing for our staff to use?
Yeah, so we had some professional development recently um for probably about forty staff members from a company called School AI, um which is a company that has, um, it's basically ChatGPT um i- in its kind of backend, but they create, you know, Josh used the the term walled garden. They basically create kind of this, a safe spot for students where they can control um data not moving in and out directly to kind of the the larger web um in a way that would be a violation of ED Law two D. So they're, you know, guaranteeing, they they basically are disclosing that they're not saving our data, they're not storing our data, they're not using our data to teach their system that will then spit out, you know, our data to other places and things like that. So um because they will sign off on ED Law two D, it's a tool that we could use like other curriculum software that we use with companies. So um our students would have accounts, our teachers would have accounts, it's set up, you know, and designed just for school districts to use. And so um it's a safe place for students to be able to navigate and explore the world of AI. Um, that's not as open as, you know, if you just go to kind of a ChatGPT type site and type in a prompt.
Okay, so the last one, this is actually, we pulled some of this language from the US Department of Education. So there, we have a statement on AI bias and inaccurate information. Um, Chaposa Central District recognizes potential biases and inequities embedded in AI tools. The district also acknowledges that the data used to train Gen AI models is not usually made public, may be biased, and may violate copyright laws. The responses generated by um AI may be biased wrong or violate copyright laws as well. Uh, we are committed to promoting a unified understanding of AI while critically examining its biases to ensure equitable access for all students and accurate information. And that's the end of the policy for the first reading. Okay? So if there's any feedback, this is a first time these are new policies that don't exist anywhere. So we'll welcome some feedback, but we do want to um have something in place before the start of the school year, which I'm sure we'll have to revise as more information becomes available, which is fine.
Yeah, in general, the community should know that uh I attended a training, a training about this topic because the first districts around New York State are starting to think about this topic. So we want to be out in front of it as best we can. All right, the last one, neutrality.
Okay, so this policy um is designed to help support all of our students and make sure that our focus is maintained on what our responsibilities are as a school district. And so um in thinking about a lot of what occurred over the course of the last school year and in reading some of the responses from colleges as a result of what was happening on campus, uh we've crafted a um a policy that talks about the importance of the district remaining neutral on non-school related matters. And so um I'm just going to start, I'll stop after each section. Again, this is a new policy for us. There's not a lot of models out there for us to to follow. Um, and so let me just begin by uh going through like official statements and and moving through the, down through the policy. So official statements, the Chaposa Central School District will refrain from making official statements or taking positions on political, social, or economic matters that fall outside the purview of the school district's operation and responsibilities. Official statements on such external issues have the potential to undermine student inclusivity and invite pressure from community members with divergent perspectives. By maintaining neutrality on external matters, the district ensures that our efforts remain focused on enhancing the educational environment for our students and that staff are not distracted from their primary responsibility. Any comments on that section? Okay, communication guidelines. District leaders are employed for their expertise in education and their ability to support the academic, social, and emotional development of our students. When speaking or acting in their official capacities, they must focus on issues directly related to the operation of the school district. This focus is essential to maintaining a clear and consistent message that prioritizes the needs and well-being of of the students. All official communications from the administration, faculty, and staff should reflect the district's commitment to neutrality on external matters. Personal opinions on matters outside the school district should be clearly distinguished from official district positions and should not be communicated through official district channels. Any comments on that? Maybe this is one of the policies where I read through the whole thing and then we talk about it. Is that okay? All right, curriculum and instruction. The faculty should address political, social, or economic matters with students through age-appropriate curriculum, lessons, and materials aligned with the New York State learning standards. The district recognizes the importance of appropriate opportunities for students for student learning and civic civic engagement. If the district believes an external event may impact our students' ability to access learning, district and school leadership will provide faculty with age-appropriate instructional and social emotional resources and guidance. Resources will also be shared with families by school or district personnel. Right, now there's a section here on district-sponsored student clubs and equal access clubs, which is, a lot of this is um regulatory language. So it's unlawful for it, for any public secondary school which receives federal financial assistance and which has a limited open forum to deny equal access or a fair opportunity to or discriminate against any students who wish to conduct a meeting within that limited open forum on the basis of religious, political, philosophical, or other content of speech at such meetings. The following must apply for a meeting of this nature um if it takes place under the Equal Access Act. The meeting is voluntary and student-initiated. There is no sponsorship of the meeting by school or employees. The employees of the school are present present um are present at religious meetings only in a non-participatory capacity. The meeting does not materially or substantially interfere with the orderly conduct of educational activities within the school. District-sponsored clubs and Equal Access Act Equal Access Act clubs are permitted to co-sponsor events, activities, or fundraisers with outside organizations with the permission of the building principal. Clubs may not represent the district at an off-campus event without the permission of the building principal. District clubs and organizations authorized to co-sponsor events with outside organizations that may compromise the district's neutrality on external matters must clearly indicate that the event is not endorsed by the district when publicizing it. District staff attending such events will be present solely to supervise student club members. And then the last part is policy disperush- distribution. The superintendent is responsible for ensuring that all district communications and actions align with this policy, while school principals are tasked with ensuring compliance within their respective schools. So that, that is the policy. So let me, let me talk about what the policy does allow for and then what it doesn't allow for. Is that, is that a good place to start? So the policy, there are going to be things that happen in 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 the world that are going to impact our kids, right? We're going to still address that. We're going to support our kids and we're going to send, we're going to meet with our teachers. We're going to talk about um how kids are showing up at school and how we need to talk about certain events, and we're going to push resources to parents. What we're not going to do is is take a position on those events. We're not going to categorize those events um in a way that it feels like we're we're placing our our personal belief system within the context of any of our communications out to the community. It also allows for clubs to support events that align with their belief system without um without compromising the district's neutrality. So if there's an event that kids want to support and it's safe, we feel like it's a safe event for kid, we're not going to approve kids going to a rally. That's, we're not going to supervise that, right? But if kids want to participate in an event that we feel is safe and um for them to participate in, but we think could compromise our neutrality, we're still going to allow them to do that. We're going to supervise them there, but we're also going to let people know that this is not a district that we are endorsing, even though one of our clubs is co-sponsoring it. That way, all of our students feel like they're supported here if they don't have the same beliefs about a, an event or an activity that's happening within the community, which happens here often. Um, so that, that's the purpose of it. I, there's not a lot in public schools, there's not a lot of language that exists like this, but I do think that, you know, what happened last year I've never experienced before in all my years in 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 public education. So I I feel like this policy helps us address some of 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 that in a way that everyone would feel supported, because I don't know if everyone felt supported last year in the way that we would have intended them to feel. So uh it's my hope that having some language to anchor in about what we're, what our role is when when things happen within within the broader context in the world will provide clarity for our residents um and for our teachers and for our kids. So I don't know, I want to open it up to other people's comments.
I mean, I I definitely think there is this is timely and certainly what we experienced last year, but also for what's ahead. I mean, we obviously have a very contentious uh election that we're all about to endure. So I think it is important to ground us in something. Um, but I also think it's important at times, forget the election for a second, and exogenous world events to support our students with a level of neutrality, of course, but to know that they are being supported by you in particular, because you are you are the leader. So I don't want this to sort of serve as a referendum in any way where you're sort of like, well, I can't say anything on that, when our kids would need your support. So I just.
Yeah, I can, I yeah, I hear what you're saying.
It's definitely, I, all of that is very important. How I say it, what I say, how I communicate when things happen. I also think what this does too is it provides a lot of guidance for faculty about what, how they should be presenting information, how they should be showing up, and what they should be saying and what they shouldn't be saying in the context of our classrooms, which we've all heard a lot of feedback on as as well. And so I think that that, this policy also lends itself to giving some clear direction to our staff.
So does this policy then need um addendums for violations of of the policy? By faculty members?
Um, no, because we would handle that in with our internal systems.
Okay.
So if we had a, what it does is it gives you language to be able to say, listen, we have a policy and let's talk about what was brought forward that you might have communicated that doesn't align with it.
Okay.
And not just for the, not just for, for all staff, or maybe for all staff. Because without direction, you you wind up our kids sometimes feel unsupported. So I I think it's very clear for everybody. And I think that's going to be helpful.
Can I ask about the, I know you said you wouldn't allow the kids to go to a rally of any kind because it wouldn't be safe. But if there's something that the kids want to go to that isn't neutral, and so the district is not going to sponsor that event, and but you're still allowing the club to go to an event that we don't consider neutral, and you're possibly sending staff to go and supervise the children only?
Yeah, so uh the principal would have to agree to the cosponsorship. So if if the principal doesn't believe that the club aligns with our value system, right? Or if they feel like the event is not something the district should be a part of, then kids can go on their own under the parent supervision, but we're not going. Like it's when we, we don't send our staff, that's not something that we're a part of, and they're not allowed to put that on any kind of advertisement that we're, that the club's a part of it. It's our supervision that creates a situation where they can co-sponsor it. So kids have a right to, we have kids doing all kinds of things around here and all, that's, that's fine. It's fine. But once we're a part of it, I mean, we're not going to put our our students or our staff in a situation where we're participating in something that we don't feel safe. So like, we would never approve like students going to a rally in Washington. Like, that's just not going to be, that's not something a public school, at least our public school would feel comfortable approving, because so many things could happen down there. And we're taking kids in an, in a, to an experience like that. We're solely responsible for their supervision. We're just those are things that don't make sense for us.
So students can attend things?
On their own.
On their own, but they can't sit at the club?
Is in, yeah, they, and they, which is, I, this to me is um, like I see this policy for, you know, sometimes our students co-sponsor events and there are a lot of political speakers there. This, that would be something that we would allow students to co-sponsor, but we would just say it's not something that we're endorsing. Right? So they could still move forward, we move forward with the activities that they feel are important to the, as long as it aligns with everything else that we're doing. We're not going to allow kids to co-sponsor events that don't have messages aligned with our equity policy. It's just not going to happen.
All right. So and again, on the agenda tonight, uh on the board page of the website, if people want to read this and provide comments to us, we welcome that. And do you think we'll do a second reading of this one?
Yeah, I think we should. I don't think this is a rush policy.
Yeah, right.
Um, so I think we should do a second reading and then maybe at the next meeting, we could do an adoption, or maybe it waits till the end of September. It's not, it's not a
Yeah.
I think like the AI policy and the other two policies are are more important. I think this one needs to take, we need to take a little bit more time with.
Okay, I think that brings us to item four on the agenda.
Okay.
Christine?
I recommend uh four point one instructional as presented.
I'll move that we I'll move that we accept Dr. Ackerman's recommendation for four point one. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Aye?
I recommend four point two non-instructional as presented. Anybody?
I'll move one minute, second.
Any questions or concerns on this one? Okay, all in favor? Aye? That moves us to five, which is the consent agenda. So let me read the blurb about that, and then we have, I have a recommendation from Lisa for this, so hang on for that. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the Board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all Board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent, but before we get to that, it's being recommended to me that we take out five point five, which is the tax warrant, so that we can do a roll call vote for that, so that each person will be heard separately. Are there any other items from the consent agenda that anybody wants to talk about separately?
I don't want to move anything out of the consent agenda, but after we move in second, I would like some discussions or just.
Sure.
Questions on some of them.
Okay. So Lisa, would you prefer that we do the long list first and then do five five? Or do you want to do the little?
Would you recommend to remove it?
Ah, okay. So I will recommend that we remove five point five from the consent agenda. Can we have a second for that?
A second?
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Now? Okay, yeah, there we go. Okay, thank you for the tutorial. So now we're going to do the long list. We'll come back to five point five, but five point one through five point four, and then five point six through five point one eight. Can I have a motion to do all of those, all as one big group?
Second.
Okay, time to discuss. Kelly, what's on your mind?
Okay, so I just, did we, five point seven in terms of the SUNY purchase facilities? Is that something we have always done?
Yes.
And what did we, what did we, is it for? I know that it listed a bunch of spaces, but what is it mainly for?
It's for the pool.
It's just for the pool? Oh, because I thought that that was moved to Sawmill, so I wasn't.
I know that Jamie felt like we needed to reserve the pool for some of our meats at purchase, so he's recommending the contract be implemented.
Oh, just for meats, not for practices?
Yeah, I'm not sure where their practices are gonna be, but I know that he feels like we need to have this contract in place for the team.
Okay, yeah. And then, and the greenhouse maintenance, is that a new company?
No, that's not a new company, right?
Five point ten?
No, that's the company, that's the company that built the greenhouse, constructed it for us. And so there's so many moving parts. This is kind of the regular maintenance where they adjust the tolerances of the different things. They wash out the system that creates the cooling. It's just, it's like a car and that, it just needs that kind of regular maintenance. So this will, I think, save us money in the long run in that it's being maintained appropriately over time.
Great, and then the busing. That is. Yes, five point one one. So this is not our buses, we're using their buses? How does that work?
This is a merged team, and so one of the districts has to transport the students.
Oh, okay.
They're the, they're, they're the, so it's the transportation around that merger. So you'll see a whole bunch of school districts listed in there, including us.
Yes, yes, okay. And then five point one two, that's.
I have a question on that as well, so would you be tempted to ask that?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that this is true, but just want to make sure that we're doing like merge busing like that, and it's different schools, parent, parent, different kids, like all of our, everybody's insurance.
Yes, David approved this contract.
Okay.
Yep.
And then five point one two, that is the private investigator?
Yes.
That's right.
And that's just sort of as an, as needed basis, right? Okay. Okay, and then I know Josh, I didn't really get to have a long conversation with Josh, but the other ones regarding the budget transfers, I can ask him when he gets back.
Yeah, he sent an email, Kelly, do you want me to resend it to you? He talked about what he should have more.
Yes, no, he did, but I just had some, you know, follow-up questions, and it's just really, you know, about category accounting, it's not really. It's just basic questions for, for information.
Any other comments or discussion about these items? Alright, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're gonna go back to five point five, and again, I'm gonna look at Lisa on how she'd like to do this. Do you want to call the roll yourself?
Yes. Do you want to have a roll, do you want to have a roll call vote? I've decided to do that in recent years.
Right.
So, I mean, you have a second?
I'll move that we do five point five. Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Alright, that takes us to six. This is where we acknowledge receipt of the following contracts approved by the superintendent per Board Policy sixty eighty-five. So we've got one about Birchwood, we've got one for a keynote, and we've got one for the swimmers at the Sawmill Club. So let's take these together, six point one through six point three, if that's okay. Can I have a motion for these to acknowledge receipt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nothing for seven tonight, and so just under number eight, we've got three financial reports. I'll just read them each, eight point one through eight point three. We're just acknowledging receipt of the Claims Auditor's Report for June twenty-four and the June twenty-three twenty-four summary, acknowledging receipt of the Treasurers Report for June twenty-twenty-four, and acknowledging receipt of the Extra Classroom Activities Year-end Report for twenty-three twenty-four. Can I have a motion again to acknowledge receipt of these three items? Can I have a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Future meetings. We'll be back Thursday, August twenty-ninth at ten AM. First day for the faculty and staff coming back. We'll be here in the Academic Commons and then once again on September tenth. So with that said, can I have a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-four?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, thanks very much.